Well, good morning, everyone, and we will open the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, October first of 2024. And with me today, Don Flanker, Man Flago, myself, Mike Stein, that's our county supervisors. Lisa Smith, our county attorney, Bill Orange from here from I T. Luann is our executive assistants in the background, and first on our agenda this morning is Jane Chekell, our Jackson County engineer. Good morning.
Morning. So the first thing on the agenda is an item that was tabled last week, supplemental sign policy. Assuming you've gotten a chance to read through that in the last week. Um, what it really is intended to do is just protect us, I guess, of the county from having all these signs requested to be put on the roads that aren't warranted, I guess, when they're warranted, then we'll follow the steps of this policy if approved. But otherwise, it just without this would be, well, I want this sign installed, and we don't have anything to back up why or no, yes or no, and either way, why it would be installed or not installed.
Well, we do have several policies in place as far as distances, you know, for bus stops or something like that and things like that. So there is some policies in place that.
Yeah, it relates to the school bus stop head signs. We currently do follow what this policy is where the request would have to come not from the resident or homeowner, it'd have to come from the school's transportation director. Uh, and then from there, we will do a site distance study, and the D O T's got guidance on all that. And it would follow also the N U T C D here for advanced placement advice. If in those cases, I mean, we're doing already part of this policy for that, because if it's warranted, okay, we go and put it up. Right now, the only part of it we don't follow, we do not follow is as far as who pays for it, but if it warrants it, we put it up. If it doesn't, no, because it's adequate site distance and all that, but we already are following a large part of this personally.
Motion in favor.
A second for motion.
I have a motion and a second to untable the table item as the sign policy. Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried. So you need a motion to pass the policy as submitted, correct?
Correct. Unless you guys have further questions or.
Any further discussion on it?
I'll make that motion to pass the policy as submitted.
Thank you.
Motion, a second to pass the approve the supplemental sign policy as presented, all those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Um, next is just a entrance permit, uh, field entrance on 30th Avenue for Jennifer and Tracy Sanders. Um, just a field entrance, it meets site distance both ways. No coverage required in this one, it's at the high spot, so pretty straightforward, so I recommend approval.
Motion to a second. I have a motion and a second to approve the field entrance on 30th Avenue for Jennifer and Tracy Sanders as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Uh, and I can just give an update, uh, our two bridge projects that are going, 184th and the 136th day labor bridge are both about at the same point in construction, uh, setting up their false work in forms for preparing for a deck board. So, um, depending on when they're going to be at 136th this week. I'd hopefully that one would be poured here within an upcoming week, uh, 184th might be a car or a week beyond that yet, because there's a lot more form work that has to be set up for that one, but all the piling are driven and just setting up forms to get them poured. I am going to meet with the Iowa Concrete Paving Association on one of our roads. Actually, more just one, a couple of our roads for upcoming, uh, the five-year program roads to just investigate concrete overlays versus asphalt, just to check those out. Uh, we went down to Jones County last week to observe one of theirs, and they've been doing them consistently for 20 years, so.
And they've been having good luck with them?
They have, you know, they, they don't, their roads are probably a little bit so, so our road, some of our roads do not have the proper shoulder width, but to allow a concrete overlay, like say Iron Bridge Road, for example, from 62 to Iron Bridge, you know. Well, that was already done with that's called handful of years ago, but that one is one that would not allow a concrete overlay to work, because there's no shoulder with where a lot of our existing pavements do have that proper shoulder width. What you need a shoulder width for is when you do a concrete overlay, the road will be shut down during that portion. So contractor would have to supply golf carts and brand, most people have side-by-side anymore, but it's really need a wide enough shoulder for access for people to get from the work zone to outside of the work zone where their vehicles would be parked.
And on average, how long did they, the road shut down?
Uh, so what, once they pour a portions, generally about two days.
A long freaking drive on it.
Two days.
Really?
Mm-hmm. They may, depending on what operations they may have going on, depending on how the road lays out or intersections, they may keep it closed a little bit longer until they get your shouldering stone put in or what have you.
And the thickness of the overlay?
Six and a half inches on average, or minimal, I should say, not average, on minimal.
Nice, so that'd be interesting.
So meet with them just to look at it, I guess, but, uh, just wanted to keep you guys aware of that.
How did your, uh, trip to Platteville go? Uh, did you bring anybody back with you?
I did not.
No.
I was.
Interested parties?
A lot of it were was kids looking for internships at, there wasn't, where we were set up, there wasn't a whole lot of kids looking for full-time. I don't know if through previous internships that they kind of already had jobs lined up, but there were just a lot of kids looking for internships, like your freshmen and sophomores versus finding that senior or junior level even looking for full-time, so.
There is a, is there like a pool that you register with or something, though? The engineer union or the engineer state thing or something, there had to be something.
Yeah, so we, uh, when we signed up for this, Iowa State's career fair was already full, so we missed the boat on that. Well, must have signed up really early for that, but, uh, the Iowa County Engineers Association had a booth out there, and they reached out to all the counties as far as let us know of any openings, because they would present, have all that there for any kids that went by their booth, and, uh, they handed them out. They're supposed to be sending some resumes back for kids that were interested, so hopefully something comes out of that. But I've yet to see if they're, if they're there on behalf of 99 counties, they got little time to compile stuff, so. Uh, but hopefully, out of Platteville, no, I guess.
And you can tell who's looking or who's hired recently, or I mean, when I was in business, if my parts guy quit, I'd try to hire my competition part guy now. Well, you know, I mean, they do that at I S A C too, you know, if they need somebody in a government position, they'll go to the cities, you know, their people working for the cities and try to.
Or consulting firms too, yeah, it sounded like we have to be in competition with other counties, there's concerns too, but, you know. We're going to keep trying, I guess, it's all we can do.
Okay.
So that's all I had, I guess.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Jane. Have a good day.
You too.
Are there, are there any businesses and citizens that are present or online that would like to approach the board? Seeing or hearing none, we'll move on to Laura Carstens, uh, and Marilyn Olsterhouse for the Jackson County Historic Preservation Commission, and I think you're going to approach us or talk about the insane asylum.
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning to all of you. Thanks for the weather.
Yeah, I worked hard on that.
I sent you an email yesterday, Laura, that some kind of grant I seen just popped up a week or so ago, and I had sent it to Kelly, but she was having some, um, her parents have some health issues, so I know she was a little behind maybe, but, uh, I don't know if you've seen her.
Did you send it to my E C I A email or?
I think so. Whatever one I had from a previous email, I just copied and pasted it.
Were you?
That was four jobs before that.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
No, no.
Okay. I don't remember seeing it. Um, do you want to try again? It's L Carstens, so there's an S in there. No. So, I, you will leave that out. So L Carstens, E C I A.
L C A R S T E N S at E C I A.
Yeah, that's it.
Yesterday, Monday, yeah, Monday.
Okay. I'll check my spam for.
Okay.
I don't understand that.
I was there.
So what we want to talk to you today about is the planning level assessment for the insane asylum, which is at, what was the Jackson County? We had, um, we've looked at this as a commission, Harold, and I both serve on the commission, and we wanted to share that with you, and then also go ahead and go through this presentation, which kind of gets the highlights. This was prepared by, we can go to the next slide. Thank you. We had contract with Heritage Works and F H Design Art of Dubuque. They were hired by the commission with your, um, approval to do this planning level assessment. The idea is that we, we have an evaluation of the site conditions. We also can help, which can help us determine our priorities and also some cost estimates. We are a partner with what's called Silos and Smokestacks National Heritage Area, and this is a national designation. And as part of that partnership agreement, we need to have our building open to the public for education interpretation tours. But the conditions right now, we haven't been able to do that for a few years.
It had been open in the past, um, for more private tours, and there's signage out there also, which now is not actually, um, up.
Yeah.
For viewing.
Right, the signage is actually stored inside the building. This is a historically significant building, it's a great example of the limestone architecture we have throughout the county. Uh, it is, um, the only building that's left on the site, what was the poor farm, and it is on the National Register of Historic Places. And the ownership comes back as Jackson County County Farm and care of the Board of Supervisors. We'll go to the next slide. I'm going to just take some time, walk through the exterior conditions that are discussed in more detail in the report. Um, overall, the exterior was given a rating affair by our consultants. Masonry is port affair, there's some biological growth, there's some cracks, and some deterioration. The doors are poor, they've deteriorated, deteriorated. Um, and really, the first four doors have to be replaced, and the others need to be repaired. Windows are in good condition, the wood cornice, the freeze and fascia. There's some rotted areas that can need to be replaced, but otherwise they can scrape painting. And then the roof and gutters appear good, although we did not have anyone get up on the roof for an inspection, but it was observed from the ground. So that still might be something to consider. Interior conditions, um, were rated extremely poor. The first four, uh, well, actually, all three floors, you can see the same situation. We have debris, we have animal droppings, and the two upper floors, we have animal carcasses. Um, we have plaster that's crumbling, we have wiring that's exposed, and the stairways do not have complete railings, which is why it's not open to the public. Go to the next slide. So what we asked the consultants to do was to provide us cost estimates, and so what they did is they've given us two categories, so high priority are the ones that would be a short term of one to three years, keeps the building safe and would let the public access it, and that would be near term. Low priority is long term. This is something that would be done to maintain the building and probably could be programmed over a five-to-10-year period. And their costs are based on 2024 numbers, so they're, we feel pretty accurate estimates, we can go to the next slide. So for the high priority, they've divided those into two, two categories, one is improvements at the site itself, and the other is improvements to the building. So for example, if we approve the site, we would be able to do, uh, open it to the public as an interpretive experience just from the outside, so these may be something to think about. And that list that you see there would be a one to $2,000 range. The improvements that are listed here are 15,000 to 20,000. This would really make sure that the building is clean, it's safe. Um, we've got the exposed wiring removed, the doors are functional, and they act as security doors. There's railings on this stairway, and, um, anything loose or falling has been cleaned out. We also have an issue with, um, a load-bearing wall in the northeast corner. Um, was removed, and so that impacts the upper floors. We can go on to the next slide, please. Lower priority would be those long-term maintenance options, um, repair and repointing the masonry, repair and restoration of the, the wood, eaves, fascia, and sopits, scraping, sanding, and painting the wood surfaces on the outside, and then some accessibility upgrades. So we also asked our consultants to help identify some available funding that we could use for the high priority repairs and possibly for the long-term restoration. The Iowa Historic Resource Development Grant Program is a state program. It's a 50% matching grant that can be used for historic preservation, infrastructure, and typically you figure 50,000. The certified local government grant is one where, or because Jackson County had Preservation Commission is your certified local government, and we are able to get grants. These are federal grants, they don't do bricks and mortar, but if you wanted to do more in-depth study or planning, that's available. Uh, another one is the Dubuque Racing Association Core Grant. The consultants noted that this is used to enhance economic development and tourism opportunities, again, up to 50,000. Um, and so that might be one to look at. And then, because we're a partner with Silos and Smokestacks, they also have, uh, smaller grant amounts that are available for planning and educational programming, uh, maybe updating our interpretation, installing signs on the outside, that type of thing, but they don't do the infrastructure work. So our recommendation is that you accept this report. Uh, we feel it was, as a commissioner, we felt it answered our needs and gave us the direction. We'd like to also refer it to whichever county department or departments would be appropriate. We've asked you to go ahead and pay the consultant's fee, and I believe you were, you approved that claim at your last meeting. We'd also like you, if you could, to direct whoever those appropriate county staff are, to work with our commission so that we can implement the reports recommendations. We'd like to try and do that within current budget or help plan for future budgets, and we definitely would like to assist staff with exploring those grant resources and others that may be out there, so we can leverage the county funds uh, to move forward on the recommended improvements.
Do you know, Laura, it would like to grant funding when they say the 50 or 20% match, whatever, 50% match, would that include, uh, labor on our part?
Some will allow that.
X amount of dollars for so many hours, whatever it may be, you know, I'm just thinking, our maintenance guy's pretty handy, and I would guess that if we needed some new doors in that lower level, that we could put in some new doors. Now, we talked about the, months ago, we talked about the animal droppings and such.
Okay.
Um, and I don't know what it takes. I think Don was in here, and we talked about it, and what it requires, if there's a requirement, what has that suit, you gotta wear, we used to go in the hug barn and shovel it out, you know, I mean, but I, I don't know what that would require at this, at that point. I, I think we're certainly, um, we could engage our maintenance department as far as time is, you know, whatever time it may be allowed by them, you know, they're, they're busy, and but like I said, he does a nice job with doing that kind of stuff, and I, I don't know, you know. We should probably have to take a look at them doors anyways, I maybe secure them doors. I know they were bad, it's, it's really a unique building, you've never been in it. I mean, we've had tours in the past, and we've had, uh, I think it was on the barn tour one year. Um, yeah, so, and we've had people stay in there.
Yeah, they're, we could certainly try and, um, see what kind of funding we can get that includes the match for donated labor, there are some that allow it and some that don't, and we'd be more than happy to.
Or even the historical side, in-kind stuff, you know, whatever they may do, I know there's old masons around, and there's guys that are looking for tinkering and da-da-da, you know, but, um, honestly, to throw funding at it is, we're still trying to get a new one open, so.
Two of these, uh, grant opportunities that you look to me that are more what we're looking for, kind of the brick and mortar kind of stuff. If we want to do a match, or, you know, could our match kind of be the, do they have to be separate matches for each grant, or can our, can we pledge a certain dollar amount and then be used for both grants?
We have to, we have to match each grant separately.
Good.
You know, that you can't use a match from one branch for another. Um, you know, they, they'd be onto us pretty quick if they started that, but the.
Sometimes you can get one grant as a match for another grant.
I was just going to say that, sometimes a state grant or a private grant can match a federal grant or state grant, or whatever it might be, so that you can do, and then the county match might be part of it too. These are probably very competitive programs, so if we can have something in as a match, whether it's in-kind services, donated labor, um, donated materials, um, some of these grants will let us count it as our match, and, but they also, might also want us to put in some type of.
Sure.
Cash marriage, too. Little skin in the game, I guess I could say, absolutely, but, um, we, again, the commission is, um, very pleased with this report. And we would very much like to work with your maintenance staff to see how we can find ways to make some of these site improvements secure.
We'll drag him handle, he goes out there, he's got to do some maintenance on the generator out there, anyway, take a look at them doors and stuff and see what he thinks about them, you know.
Sure.
There's framework that needs to be done and such, or what, but it's been a while, you know, and it's been neglected, I guess, to a point, I mean, um, you know, it's been used for several different things over the year, including a hug barn, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's too bad, it's, it's, it's quite a building, there's.
Yeah.
There's a lot of history there, but.
Right, and one of the best things to do is to keep it weather tight and, um, watertight, and the doors are also important, because we've had some, some of those doors have been busted open and had to been, um, repaired and locked up, and so you just risk the damage to the structure. And it's got this load-bearing wall, so we've got a long-term structural issue that we might want to look at, and there's some temporary things we could do, and that sort of.
So would you say load-bearing wall, uh, are you talking like a stone wall or, or a framed up wall, or what are you talking?
I'm not sure, I have to, I have to, um, look through the report.
I mean.
My thoughts, it was a, it was a framed wall, so there might be a way to use jacks or something.
Well, yeah, there's supports on the floor, you know, instead of putting our foundation that we could work off of.
Yeah. So those would, so that would be something where, you know, we'd be happy to work with your maintenance supervisor.
Is, is there a lock on that?
Mm-hmm.
Backdoor, a padlock?
Yes, I believe it's padlock.
You know, just so that if maintenance went out there, they could get in.
I, I get the key here, I believe, I think maybe Luann has the key here. I don't, okay, then. We'll ask Don.
Don.
Would you know who has the key to the insane asylum? We'll try to find it.
Don. Somebody, somebody has to if they did this report, so.
Well, or.
When we, when we went there, Don.
So, I mean, a previous maintenance guy might have had one too, I, I can ask you, you know, maybe he might have one, but they marked.
Oh, we do have one.
There we go.
It's in the deadbolt, whatever, if it's still functional.
Okay, that's what's, that's there then.
There's probably a key on the deadbolt, I think, or a padlock, yeah. Okay, well, uh, what do you, what are you asking at this point from us?
Basically, I think we've kind of discussed about it, uh, you having us work with your maintenance supervisor and explore grants that we can use to, to look towards these recommendations. Um, I, I suggest we try and work through those high priority, short-term items if we can.
Well, I think the biggest thing is getting it secured, you know, push, and
Absolutely.
I know he's, he's fairly new, and he's catching up with things, so I'm pretty good, but, um, again, it's going to be at his whenever possible, and he's can get away.
Absolutely, we understand that, and we're just, we just want to.
And we certainly want to, I think we want to pursue options.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not going to throw a bunch of money at it at this point, or commit to something, but, um.
So there's $2,000 for this report, is that in the historic preservation budget?
Okay.
Yeah. So we need to make a motion to approve the report and pay the budget.
I think you already.
Or pay you, I mean, pay.
We already paid it.
Um. I would make a motion to accept the report as presented.
Second that.
I got a motion and a sec, second to, uh, accept the, um, Jackson County insane asylum, uh, assistance report as presented, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign.
I would make a, I would make a motion that we proceed with coordinating with our maintenance department to come formulate some ideas of possibly going forward, whether it be in-kind, or maybe purchase the doors in manpower, whatever, to kind of progress, and they can be brought back for us to, uh, work on. However, you want to write that out.
I want it.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I got a motion and a second to approve, uh, maintenance and grant possibility moving forward with maintenance and grant possibilities as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I appreciate the work, ladies, again, it's, it's, you know, we, we'd like to do whatever we can, but it's probably not on the top of our list.
It's all right.
It's quite a building, I grew up about a mile away from there.
We understand, the county has a lot of competing needs, we appreciate the fact that you were able to provide us with the funds to get the report, because this is not, we're not, we don't have a skill set to do that, is.
There're probably not many of them around.
So that, great start, thank you very much for the report.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Lisa? Have a good day.
Twenty dollars of the ladies.
I'm sorry. Yeah, aye, yeah. Are you?
I was, I spoke with Lori, is she here? Do you know?
Uh, she's here, but yeah, she's.
She wanted us to wait.
She's not at 10 o'clock, yeah.
So you're trying to get here with Lori?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, wondering.
We're the U R energy portion.
Okay.
Or Ellen.
All right.
Okay, so then this morning I need a motion from the minutes of the September 24th, 2024 board proceedings as written by Honored Dr. Spence and Authorized Public Mission and Special Agent Favors.
So moved.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes for the September 24th, 2024 board proceedings and published, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
Motion to approve a five-day special C class retail alcohol license with outdoor service to St. Patrick Church at 2891446th Avenue Bernard, effective October 24th, 2024 through October 28th, 2024.
So moved.
Thank you.
Motion and a second to approve a five-day special class C retail alcohol license as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
This is, my next motion is just because of our budgets, the way that we do budgets, excuse me. I need a motion to approve resolution number 1068-10-01-2024 for an operating transfer from the Rural Services Fund, 11,000, to the Secondary Roads Fund, 20,000, for $675,000, effective October 1st, 2024.
So moved on the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 1068-10-01-2024 as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
And again, this is a budgetary thing, this resolution, I need a motion to approve resolution number 1069-10-01-2024 for an operating transfer from the General Fund, 01,000, to the Secondary Roads Fund, 20,000, excuse me, for $50,000, effective October 1st, 2024.
I'm moving.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve resolution 1069-10-01-2024 for operating. For operating transfer, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
Periodically, we go through this process with uh Iris or ECIA because of delinquent Leisure Lake sewer assessments. Um, I did check with Shelley this morning. We currently have about fourteen thousand dollars that is delinquent up in Leisure Lake. Um, today I need a resolution to approve uh number ten seventy dash ten dash zero one dash twenty-twenty-four. Certifying delinquent Leisure Lake sewer assessments to the county treasurer for property tax collection effective October first, twenty-twenty-four.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve resolution ten seventy dash one zero dash zero one. Dash twenty-twenty-four certifying delinquent Leisure Lake sewer assessments. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
I have uh talked to Nate Jones, the director at Jackson County Conservation. He applied for and did receive a grant. And it is for four thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and they are requesting. That this is done by resolution. So today I need a motion to approve. Resolution ten seventy-one dash ten dash zero one dash twenty-twenty-four. Accepting the Living Roadway Trust Fund Grant for four thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. For the contract of surveying Jackson County roadside vegetation management.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve resolution ten seventy-one dash one zero dash zero one. Dash twenty-twenty-four accepting the Living Roadway Trust Fund Grant. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
That's all, but I have some more to add.
Thank you. Noanne?
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. On the calendar for this week. Um, tomorrow, October second. Nine AM is Regional, RTA Regional Transit Authority Meeting in Dubuque by Zoom for all of you. Four thirty tomorrow is, um, Wednesdays are possible at the Innovate One Twenty meeting for any of you. And at six o'clock tonight is the E nine one one Service Board Meeting for Mike and Nin. Um, on Friday, October fourth, at ten thirty AM is the Senior Center Organization Committee Meeting. At the Senior Center for any of you that want to attend that. And our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, October eighth at nine AM. Uh, the only business, other business I have to date, um, looking for a motion to approve. The appointment to the Preston Library Board. Um, for a new six-year term of Don Wentworth and that term would be expiring on seven one of twenty thirty. This is an appointment that we make. The Preston Library Board makes the appointment. We, you just have to approve it.
Move to approve.
Motion in a second to approve appointment to the Preston Library Board. Uh, of Don Wentworth expiring seven one of twenty thirty. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
That's it.
That's it.
Pardon me?
Yeah, are either of you going?
I was gonna try to. What?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't paying attention. When was that?
A Friday at ten or ten.
Is that a new organization?
Any I three, I could be there.
Oh, okay. All right. I can put it on my calendar. Ten thirty at the senior.
I went to the one that had the last time where it seems like I kind of met with them.
I probably haven't.
I'm gonna try to get there. We'll see.
I think one of the same be, I I did. They put this out. I got my schedule busy, so I can't, but.
Okay. I don't know. We talked about renegotiating the terms a while back.
Don't troll Lisa. Okay.
You texting her?
We can start if it would be easier without Lori. It's not an issue for us to proceed. If that works for you, thank you.
Lori's aware of it, correct?
Yes, yeah.
She should be back. She was on, just talking.
Oh, at nine? Take a short recess at this time. We will reconvene at this time and Elizabeth Thompson is here for our Jackson County Health Administrator. And the Department Update. Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, so for our September uh report that was submitted to the Board of Health. Um, so we, at the time, we had seventy-seven water tests for the private well grant, but we actually needed a hundred for. Uh, the first quarter. Um, let's see, we have completed the reimbursements for one private well assessment. Uh, two private well pluggings and one private well reconstruction, reconstruction and one sister and plugging. Um, we also received a promotional toolkit from HHS. Um, there was a copy of it that it's not a great one. It's. Anyway, that's what we're gonna be using. You'll see it come out in some, some of the local papers um here this month. Um, and then, yeah, so we're gonna start our advertising this month. I've just been super busy, so there hasn't been a major need for it, but. I'm gonna continue to do it. Uh, Dressler's Water Project, um, so that project has been completed. I think there were a couple. Updates that Mark sent out um recently, but for the most part, it's, it's been completed. Um, I did try to get a reimbursement for the well pluggings, but the state wouldn't allow it because the private well owners didn't. Um, pay for that themselves out of pocket, but I did, I did try to. To get that, um, whether it went back to Iris or the well owners themselves. Notice is a violation. Um, so there were two N O B sent out to homeowner in Zwingle, um. Um, because they didn't have a septic system. Um, one was sent in July and the second one was served by the Jackson County Sheriff's Office in August. The homeowner made no attempt to correct the violation. Um, at the end of August. Um, I obtained a search warrant to enter the property for discovery purposes, just to confirm that they can have onsite wastewater treatment. Um, the homeowner was present and said that there was no onsite wastewater, so they confessed to it. Um, the department is currently waiting for the homeowner to submit for an application. So even though we went out there. Confirmed that we, they haven't, still haven't followed through, so I'll have to take the next steps with that. Um, so there'd be county infraction.
Wouldn't that be retroactive or?
Yeah, I mean, this is somebody that's just been, there was a couple incidences with. Um, themselves and a family member that. Had an illegal system put in. They pretended like they didn't know that it was put in. Um, let's see, there are two properties in um the county. One is Lamont, one is Sebula. They also had N O B sent out. They don't have septic systems in place, so we gotta follow up with them as well. Um, and then there was another property that was reported um in Zwingle and it was actually reported by one of the. First people that was in violation. And you might did some investigating and the person that they reported actually does have onsite wastewater treatment, so. Uh, let's see here. Um, we also had one of our commercial septic tank cleaners um dumped. Waste in Ja- uh Jones County, so I got a call for that from the D N R. I did go to Jones County because I am responsible for. Um, the land application that that individual does over there because they are a Jackson County resident. Um, so I went over there and it was actually dumped on a neighboring property. So I did an investigation for the P D over there and then later found out that. Um, they were handing it over to Jones County to take care of. Um, but now it's kind of up in the air and I'm not really sure who is really responsible and I'm not really sure that. The D N R knows either.
So do we follow up with that or what? I mean.
No.
But I mean, it's like, really?
Yeah, so this is a, this is a company that has um a few violations, so they've. Dumped on their own property that they are approved to land apply on, but they instead dumped it. Um, and they don't get too close to a house and they didn't integrate it into the soil. So this has happened a couple of times. Um, I have been working with the county attorney to try to do something about this, but we don't have a court date yet, so. But this has been going on since end of January. So, I mean.
Have you heard anything from John?
Nope. Met with them more than once about this with um.
Company, so they gotta get re-certified to be able to operate in the county or?
Yes, so they um.
Provisions and the ordinance to revoke their license if they're in fraction.
So, so we don't, so we don't have an ordinance for it necessarily. Our ordinance follows the code. Um, we are contracted in by the D N R to do this um oversight. Um, so basically we have to follow code, so we can't really do a county infraction and it's very minimal fees. But I really would like to get the ball rolling on this so that we can hand it over to the D N R and say, look. He's been in violation three different times in two different counties within the last year. And we pull his um license, so he can't do this anymore.
So you talked about, you talked about that prior, you know, about an ordinance where you can impose violations yourself and.
Yes, um, so I guess from my understanding, I can issue citations. As it is right now, um, but it doesn't relate. We don't have like a uh. In our ordinance, we don't have a a protocol on what steps to take.
Plan schedule or anything that's.
Right, so I mean, I've kind of had my own that I've just been going off of, you know, it's like write a letter or give them ten days to respond, write a letter, give them ten days to respond, that type of. And it just goes on and on and on. Um, so, yeah, I mean, we could write. Something more, you know, strict, or we could ban land application in general across the county, but. I think that that could cause some problems as well. I'll stop by John's office and see where we're, where we're at with this.
Okay.
I've stopped by there before, so. Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know what. I told him I can't do my job if he doesn't do his.
I know he's busy, but I, I mean, everybody's gotta, we gotta comply here. We're not gonna go backwards and start dumping it in the ditches and run a pipe down to the. Back forty and.
I think it's just sending the wrong message to people that the county's not doing anything and they can do what they want and. Even though I might send them a letter, it doesn't mean anything. So. It's become a problem. I would say things have gotten bad just in the last year, um. Because there's no ability to do like enforcement and I really need the attorney's office to help.
Right, we do.
Yeah. Uh, let's see. Okay, so for continued education, um, so I've taken a couple of classes uh this year, um. They're both newer classes that have not been offered in the past. One of them just covers alternative treatment units, which we're seeing a lot of those in the county, especially up in like. Bellevue area, Dressler's area, um, where we have just smaller lots we're dealing with. Um, then the upgrade system, so that was a new class offered. Um, both of these are um, were free, so they. The state got a grant from the EPA, um, and they're covering classes for sanitarians, so these were free for us. Uh, let's see, for our onsite wastewater installers, um, so in my report it says we're looking at doing something, but. Um, at my last four talk meeting, we actually um approved to pass this, so. Basically, we are requiring um a C WAT certification um for all of our onsite wastewater installers. It's a certification I already have. It's a certification that um half of the state is requiring um county by county. Um, the majority of the counties are on the eastern side of the state. The only ones that do not require that certification are actually our county. Um, Clint County, Interview County. I have a little map just to show you. I actually sent this out to our installers just so that they could see. You can see the ones in red, they're requiring it, so it's becoming more and more.
Makes sense.
Yep, so we're doing that and then uh the code is changing and so we're also requiring them. To take a class through D Mac just um to go over the um provisions made to the code.
So Elizabeth, is it a case where you can contact the D N R too and and just get them involved with uh?
The D N R is, they actually told me that I am the most involved sanitarian that they have and like they talk to me more than they do any other.
Anyone else?
No, so it really just comes down to us and then they told me that we have more enforcement power than they do. It just takes them longer to do enforcement than it does for us.
Well, we appreciate you working on it.
Um, then our ordinance, I'm just still working on doing, you know, or sorry, the state is still. Working on passing their changes to their code and so once those are made, then I'm gonna move forward with making provisions to our ordinance. Actually rewriting our ordinance completely. Um, and then I'm also gonna rewrite a, a separate ordinance for onsite wastewater installers. I was advised by D N R to have two separate ordinances for that. And that's all I have.
Okay, so, yeah, I guess. Appreciate it. Then if you stop there and we'll see if we can follow up with it and maybe get the ball rolling again. Um, again, we're not gonna, we appreciate what you're doing and, I mean. A little bit of logic says that let's not dump it there unless comply by the laws, but. I guess that's not the way it should be, so. Any questions for Elizabeth? Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Have a good day.
Me too.
Okay, Lori, you busy little girl. Lori Rowley, our Jackson County zoning administrator. Good morning.
Hi, guys. I'm usually not late to the party, but I am today, so I apologize.
That's okay. Um, we're not late, too bad.
Okay, so do you guys want to start with the way the um agenda's written with uh U R Energy?
Sure.
Yeah.
The purists and ladies are ready? Or somebody's ready? If you would just please come forward and identify yourself.
Hi, guys. I'm Blair Olery. Um, I am the Director of Operations and C O O for U R Energy. Um, my dad and I started this business two years ago. Um, he has worked in the electrical industry. Since he was fifteen years old. Um, he has worked in co-ops. He started his own business in the energy field and um we kind of just came together with this. Um, we were brought into like the data center operations. About three years ago and finally took the leap on our own to, we didn't like the way that um other people were running the industry. Um. We got a much broader spectrum of how. Some people operate their operations and don't care about necessarily the land or the community because. Majority of these people are coming from out of state, um, because Iowa actually has very good energy cost rates. Um. We've been working with Nick Schultz at Macocata Valley. And he was the one that actually reached out to us, letting us know that he had excess. Um, energy power that was not being utilized, um, which is something that actually is very misunderstood. In these kind of concepts because people are thinking that we are taking away from the community. Or, you know, what happens if if we need this energy that this data center is using and such. Um, so that's the difference that kind of gets misconstrued, um.
Do we know how much energy a data center would need?
Yes, so actually, this is a question. So, um, with us, for you, our energy, our minimum is five megawatts that we're generally working with. Um, and so when it comes down to it, we are the builders, we're the contractors. We do all of the work. Permitting, zoning, engineering, building, all of it. We have clients that. Pay for these data centers and we continue to operate the center for them. Um, so it wouldn't be an in, you know, a non-familiar person that you would have owning the land because we own the land or are doing. Fifty-fifty deals with some of our landowners. Um, it just kind of depends.
Purchase.
Uh, lease, lease option to purchase or a fifty-fifty, so we would enter in with an L L C with a current landowner. So there's a couple of different options that we have. I mean, for example. Um, in this county alone, we, there are six projects that are potential for us. Um, and that's just from the, that's just from Nick with Macocata Valley, so. Um, that doesn't necessarily mean that we would put six projects up, but you know, just to kind of give you an idea. Um, I know that this had been put on hold all of your permitting for such data centers, um. But when I spoke with Lori, she said, you know, I think that part of. But when I spoke with Lori, she said, you know, I think that part of this would be an educational portion for the board. For the community to kind of understand what, you know, what the purpose is. I realized that it's such a, you know, new thing that it's not completely understood.
That's completely where we come from, cuz. I don't know, unless I Google it and read about it or. Tell me what a data center is, you know, tell me what a mining, somebody, when, when somebody says mining, I mean digging a hole.
Right, absolutely, yeah.
You know, I, I mean, so it's, it's not, so how big a facility and, and what.
Hundred percent, so, okay, I'll show you just a little example of, let's say, this is what they could, there's several different versions, just like. A brand of phone or a brand of dishwasher, they have different versions of containers. Which is what we will use every once in a while, but we are starting to stray away from more the containers and we're wanting to do more building structures. Because it's, it's understood in the data center world that, you know, oh, it's here today, gone tomorrow. And that's, that's not us. I mean, these, these investors are putting at minimum five million dollars into these investments. That's including containers, the miners, the infrastructure and the labor. So what this actually does is this is just, let's say, a shipping container size. So, it, what is it, eight by forty or something along those lines and inside of the container, there are little about yay big. Monitors and all of these monitors are plugged in to, and at this point, the biggest thing is Bitcoin. Which we're not just doing Bitcoin, we're data centers because we're preparing for the A I, the cloud, all these new infrastructures that we'll be putting in place in the next few years. So right now, this site in particular would be a Bitcoin up until that Bitcoin drops and then we would take out the machinery. Plug new infrastructure in and new machines, so the outside structure, the shell of this whole thing would be the exact same. All operates the same, it would just be different machines running inside of it.
When you say Bitcoin, are you uh tracking transactions or uh just in an all encumbrance table?
So the, there's, so that's not a part on our site that we deal with, our client has those different third-party vendors that are operating their site. From, from like, let's say, cloud, just to put it in perspective.
You're just keeping it in one place.
Yep.
Just so I can.
If all the chips are all made and the chips are all stored by you, that's what.
No, no.
So, I'm gonna quit this talk to electrical grid. We have a power plant here in Makoka, it can crank out twenty-six megawatts.
Right.
Um, it doesn't feed Makoka, it feeds the grid and it goes out for grid stability, the type of thing. That's kind of what these centers do.
Absolutely.
Supports the.
Stabilize, stabilizing the grid is.
So there's enough memory, so when these people come on with their programs, their whatever, there's enough memory in the cloud to handle the use.
Yeah, that's exactly what we're dealing with. Um, in the last month and a half, we brought on a lot more A I clients, so that's more of like the cloud, the, the capability. But we, this, there are recent projects that we're working on, I have to, you know, disclose, obviously, there, there's the only thing about our company is that. We're completely honest, that's why we come to the board, that's why we apply for these permits, we don't just go plug it into somebody's basement or garage or anything like that, right? So we're not trying to hide anything. What, the biggest thing for us is we wanna do it right, so we can prove to these communities that. This isn't going to affect your water or your energy supply, or it, it's literally just a box that sits on a piece of land. Um, we did do some decibel level readings, cuz I know that one of the biggest concerns with counties um comes down to what the sound is gonna be. So I have a new, I know that I shared a presentation with you guys, um, but I did put together a different one. So, and I can share if, if you guys would like any of this information additionally, I am more than happy to send it to you too. Um, so just for reference, let's say, um, the average person whispering is thirty decibels. Um, a library is right about forty-five decibels, a wind turbine, which we are in no way affiliated with. But also need to compare to, wind turbines twenty-five yards away is fifty-nine decibels. Um, and these are readings that Jessica and myself took, um, actually over in Lagrian about two hours from here that we live in, so. Hog confinement seventy-five yards away is thirty-six decibels and the data center from twenty-five yards is sixty-six decibels. So the biggest byproduct and the only byproduct of these data centers is heat. So it comes in on the intake side, which is just a little venting system. The machines push the hot air out and there's fans on the opposite side, so the sound that you're hearing is the fans.
Are they constant or are they as temperature needed?
Absolutely, so the thing is with these data centers, we're able to utilize what's called the demand response program. I don't know how familiar any of you are with certain things, so please don't be offended by the way that I explain things, but. Um, the, the demand response is, the utility would, or utility or power provider would go to our third-party, whoever's running the site. And say, hey, we need you to shut off because we're experiencing what we call peak demand. So everybody's running their dishwashers, laundry, shower, whatever it is, it's a peak demand, so it's the highest energy point of the day. We shut off. So we are not, that's, that's the whole way of us stabilizing the grid is when they have too much going on, we shut off and bring it back down.
During the summer when you got air.
Summer, winter.
Uh, that was kind of my concern two years ago at the fairgrounds when we were having fair. And even just what was going on, you know, Makoka was asking everybody to shut everything down that they could because of this. With long heat wave that we've been having and.
Yeah, so that's what they call curtailment, so we are able to shut off at any point in time within three to seven. Is what the utility generally gives us, it's an automated text message, voicemail, whatever it is, goes into the system. And that is when it starts curtailing, it starts shutting down to that minimum load. When it comes to data centers, we're very money savvy, so the last thing we wanna do is pay peak energy pricing. So it's kind of a selfish way to place it, but I mean, you kind of understand that we don't wanna miss that peak, we don't wanna hit it, we don't wanna have any part of that. So, um, those are a few like heavy concerns that we've had in the past. Um, up until this point, is there something that's weighing on any of you?
And now, how far away, I know you guys say you locate relatively close to substations, are you? Are you linked directly with the substation?
So we're.
Or, are you, is there, is that an expense between you and the electrical company? Um, how does that work?
So, it's per situation pretty much, so in full transparency, Nick from Makoka gave us a list of, I believe, fifteen substations. And that's covering three different counties, Jackson, Jones and Delaware. And so, um, we actually have two landowners here that are from this county that are here to support, um, that would be in a land deal with you, our energy essentially. Um, so generally speaking, you know, and we kind of balance what sort of mining solution we're doing compared to like. So, and it's hard when I can't like bring everything to you, but, so you have three main versions of these mining operations. Air-cooled is one, immersion is one, which is being submerged in a, in a mixture of oil and water. And then the other one is um hydro. So hydro is a closed-loop system, it only takes X amount of water, it wouldn't be pulling from water, but for now, we're speaking on like air-cooled or an immersion. So immersion's actually a much more quiet system. When I was giving the example of these uh data centers, the air-cooled was the number that I gave, so that is going to be the highest number that you will hear. For a decibel level on these data centers. Um, we work with our engineering firm, we actually have two engineering firms, one's a data, data center specific and then the other is a local that we've used for thirty years. Um, and they help us do all of that wind pattern, sound pattern, all of those things to give us the dynamics of how far that's gonna go depending on. Say you've got a landowner here, we would face the, you know, face the fans the opposite direction just to avoid any sort of issues. Um, but Jared, who's actually my dad, has been um in this area for several weeks now, meeting with landowners. Physically having conversations, we've been working through um a lot of different documents and all of that, and I think that. You know, before approaching you guys, we've done as much as we can with like the community and speaking with the neighbors and all of the people that are around the area. Um, just to make sure that they would be comfortable with what we're wanting to put on before we even bring it to the board.
Okay, so again, different things we've been hearing with the other issues in the county. What do, does this produce any of the? Quiet noise that they say like, you know, not the audible noise, but the.
Nope, there's none of that, I mean.
Humming through the ground.
In person, yeah, no, there's never been anything that, I mean, we've never had, we have four operational sites right now. And the closest one to one of our sites is a mile and actually, no, not even a mile, one of them is actually.
About a wind turbine being close?
No, this, this is a data center.
What's, what's. Close a mile of your data center?
A house.
Okay, got it.
I mean, uh, he's, so you've got your acre of land and he's the catty corner acre of land and that's his house and he doesn't have any issues from his house. So.
Where do you have some of these up at right?
Um, right now, we have two in Potawatomi County, um, one is in Shelby County. We have one in, or two in Woodbury County.
Those are closest. Potawatomi.
Potawatomi. Um, I also have a number for Shalimar Matisse, she has been a wonderful assistance in like the Potawatomi area, even if you just wanna give her a call. I have tons of footage as well, drone footage that you guys.
Can you send us an email with some information of where some may be located?
Oh, absolutely.
Take a road trip or something, is this something we can stop and view and observe or listen?
Yep, uh, so all of these. I don't know about like touching or anything like that.
I assume these are not manned.
No.
There's nobody there.
There, there are two, two employees generally onsite during the day, not every single day, it's more so on the, if these fans are needing replaced, there's louvers that need replaced. Filters, et cetera, you know, it's just, it's your daily labor pretty much, so one to two man onsite. Um, additionally, that's super important to my dad and myself is that, you know, one of our sites that we have in Delaware County. The landowner himself.
Did you say Delaware County?
Delaware, yes.
You have one in Delaware County?
That we're working through, yeah, that we're working on.
It's not up and running.
We have our permit submitted, we're actually gonna go meet with Alex after this, so.
But the, the container itself, the building is not, not there.
No, um, but the landowner, uh, we've offered him a deal to be the maintenance program on our site, so he would deal. With all of the grass weeds, you know, all of the maintenance that would be done, including snow removal. Um, and so the, the, I guess the biggest part is, you know, one thing that's different for us is we're not looking to do this the cheapest, fastest, quickest way. We're wanting this to last, you know, I mean, we're working with all of our locals, so concrete would be local, rock would be local. Um, there's one more that would be local, but yeah, we're working with local community members.
Everything you need to be hooked to is close to the substation, am I correct? Okay, so. Um, I guess, how long have you been running these or doing these?
Two years.
Two years, so there is some tax revenue generated, I assume?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, do we have any idea what that is? Have you talked to anybody, Lori?
Um, no, cuz the ones that.
Not that it's probably gonna be a big moneymaker.
Right now, I have talked to Tony in Shelby County and they, they let this um go through with conditional use permits. Um, I've talked to Grundy County, entirely different setup, they're using hood buildings. And um, some portable buildings, which I don't like containers, that I don't think the assessor is picking up. Um, so the minimal, there's gonna be minimal value on that hood building, it's just um. The heavy thick plastic, um, whatever you call it, the laminate, whatever, over.
Um.
Yeah. So.
There you go.
So you got, you're, you guys, you guys are looking above, where you say more building base, so you're looking more like wood buildings, kinda insulated, that kinda stuff.
Looking, there's two different major structures and ju, honestly, it comes down to the client most of the time, whether they prefer cathedral style or. Chicken coop, whatever it may be, but these would be steel buildings.
And you guys are basically looking here because we're cheaper compared to, cuz to me. Supplying the grid, stabilizing, most of grid usage for the cloud is in your larger metropolitan areas. So you're coming here just because it's more economical.
Oh, absolutely, I mean, the, the biggest thing too is the cost is more efficient with the utility. Because the utility itself has actually came up with a spec, like a special rate for these demand response programs like our project. And not every utility is prepared to give that, and so that's something that we've been working on the last two years and since then, now we're working with. Probably thirty to sixty co-ops and moving into Missouri market and it's just kind of, you know, we wanna keep it local as much as we can. Because the last thing I wanna do is walk into a town and be like, hey, I would love to put something noisy and annoying in your property and, you know, I mean, I don't want that for anybody.
I ain't gonna lie, I watched a TV special on.
Absolutely.
And I was like, oh, that's, that's interesting.
I think that the biggest thing to understand is that. We're, we're not in it to make any more money than anybody else, we're wanting to treat these landowners right, we're wanting to compensate them, we're willing to make deals work. They're going to be involved in the entire process. Um, and you know, it's just building these relationships that we've built over the last six months, just in the Makoka area, has been a really big deal for us. Because we have great relationships with the landowners that we've been working with and, you know, we're purchasing the land or we're leasing it or whatever it may be. And we're taking all of the responsibility for it, you know, so if the site looks absolutely like trash, that's on us, you won't have that issue with us. So, I mean, you know, our biggest thing is the full transparency, being honest, doing it the right way, even though most of the time it creates more setbacks. Than it normally would, so.
This is something, I know we've put everything kind of on hold because we were kind of inundated with several things.
I understand it, not be the first one to say that, you know, I don't probably get it, I've had people come to me after we did our. Our hold and everything, because they're like, so is that gonna raise, raise our utility rates now? And so, and I'm like, I don't have the answer to that because.
No, it won't affect anybody, yes.
Well, I think the worry is out there that it's gonna affect the grid, that we don't, they, they're claiming that it's nowhere out there uh. Proven of how much power it's going to take.
Well, depending on where you're at.
Overload the grid, then.
It might actually make your rate cheaper because on your rate sheet, there's a little thing called P P A. And purchase power agreement and that changes depending on how much power they're using. Because your, most companies will kind of contract, so you have to use so much power. And if you don't use that much, that P P A will change, so they get compensated for that minimum or whatever, so when you have. Kind of these usages come in and the demand is there, it might actually lower it a little bit.
And that's the thing too, is like, we, the, the client themselves does sign a power purchase agreement or an S L A E S A, several different names. With the utility company, so they are putting up a significant amount of money, not only to potentially upgrade the substation. But the infrastructure that goes into it and on top of that, a very large sum of money for their deposit, so it's, the utility couldn't be.
So when you're saying the client, you're meaning you're, like, you're a company?
Our client.
That was a concern that was brought to me, is that the infrastructure is gonna have to be updated and that's gonna be expensive, which will raise our rates, da, 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 da. So steam ball rolling in fact, so.
Right.
Um, i- if there's a negative, give me a negative. You ain't gonna give me one.
I'm trying to think about like for me personally, if I were to have.
What is, I guess, yeah, kind of a question, what issues in the two years, have you guys had anything that you went?
Oh.
Oh shit, we didn't think.
Oh, absolutely, there, I mean, that's just with any job, you know, and when it comes down to it, you can, I mean, we see it every day. You, you have good cops and bad cops, you've got good doctors, bad doctors, there's a bad player in every single game and I'm, I'm. Not saying that I haven't seen that from other people that do these data centers, but we, we, we've been taking so much time to. Go back and rebuild the name of what a data center is because we realize that it's scary to people and it is so unknown and, you know. Even me trying to explain like how this works, sometimes it feels like I'm silly because I don't fully understand it. But the education portion is what I've been working on for so long that I've started to actually pride myself on. Is having these conversations to educate the people of what this is for and what it's doing. And outside of that, you know, it, what, what matters, I guess, you know, so. But for me personally, if I were to think, you know, if I had a data center within half a mile from my house. Even then, the sum wouldn't be an issue and I can say that confidently, so I don't know what I would say. The biggest issue honestly has been applying for permits because we don't necessarily fall under any cookie cutter, you know, permit, so.
Lori, did, hearing that they're working in Delaware, have you reached out? Uh, and again, part of the reason we were, we kind of put it on moratorium is because. Zoning board is kind of.
Absolutely, cuz you don't fall into a.
Right, right, yeah, absolutely.
You just make sure, again.
Well, you need to do your due diligence.
It's our job to the rest of the county to make sure, I mean, yes, it's our job and we understand that it's beneficial to these guys, but.
Yeah, we're gonna stop with Alex after.
Are you doing it under conditional use of them? And um, I reached out to Tony Boomin, who's the. And, um, I reached out to Tony Boomin, who's the zoning administrator in Shelby County. He's also an assessor. Um, two hats there and Tony did it as a conditional use. Yeah, yeah, I like him, um. But anyways, so, um, Tony said they did, they did it as a conditional use and they have not had any issues. And was that earlier this year that you guys?
Lot, beginning of, yes, it would have been like in January, I believe.
Okay, but he says, he hasn't, he's had no problems with these people, these people, I'm sorry.
No, I get it all the time.
I know issues with this organization and, um.
I guess, too, though, Lori, I would kinda ask, I mean, I know we're dealing with U R energy. But maybe do we need to reach out to some other counties that have had other things out longer? To see, I mean.
Yeah, and I have talked to Grundy County's zoning administrator and.
Cuz to me, two, two years is, to me, that's very new.
Absolutely.
As you know, what's something ten years down past? I don't know if they've been around for, I don't. Again, I don't understand them, so I don't know how long they've truly been out there.
I'm not sure exactly when Grundy, Grundy Centers came up, um, and she was talking about, um. Bad players in, in any industry. Um, I can tell you the zoning administrator in Grundy did not have a good experience. With the company in their area. Which is not you.
No, right, but that would be the things we, I would also wanna know what, what that bad experience was.
Some of it's garbage, yeah. A lot of it is just, it's a junky site. And would we wanna put limits on the amount of containers or, or, you know. Say containers are allowed for up to one year and then things have to be in a permanent, permanent.
Building structure.
Yeah, um.
And what's, what happens when? You decide, decide a site is no longer, kind of, I wanna say you're disconnect, decontamination.
So the thing with us is, we, and maybe it's not practical, maybe it is, I don't know. I mean, I'll be thirty years old at the end of this month, so I've seen, you know, so much. Change in even just like the electronic or energy field and all of those things, so this kind, excuse me, I'm a little nerdy when it comes to this. Cuz it's exciting for me. Um, but we're looking at this as a long-term investment. We're not looking at this as being like a, oh, we need to have a decommissioning plan in place in the next five years. Because ideally, this could be the next twenty to fifty years of us needing more grid stability, more energy, more control over. I don't know, our assets and our cloud and all of the things that we own, so. Um, for me personally, I don't see it as a de- decommissioning situation, but that can be something that we can discuss too.
But if you change out, if you go from your Bitcoin to your whatever else it is.
The decommissioning would be the machinery that's in, so the machines generally, so. Just to give you an idea, you can take these air-cooled machines and put them into the immersion. You just need to change some of the hard wiring in it. Which is kind of a crazy concept to me, but for example, the machine or the. Wiring that's in these containers already, it's literally like an outlet. You're just plugging in different machines. So the decommissioning for that in sense would be, we would remove all of the infrastructure that's internal, whether it's the building or the containers. Remove that, decommission it where it came from their distributor and we would put new machinery in. Our goal is to not have anything sitting out on the site. So whether that's. You know, one of our sites in Potawatomi, we have a shipping container there right now. Cuz they're getting ready for the fall season, so they need to change their louvers and their filters. So they're switching that out, they're in that process right now. So that generally happens once or twice a year.
So you purchased the equipment that's in the container and just put it in the container, is that correct?
Mm-hmm. We still have to have an electrical inspector for everything, um, and we, we have a really good relationship with all of the electrical inspectors, but.
You stated before that you were working with a, um, landowner, if you will, to do the maintenance and whatnot. I guess there should be something in place to say, this is, or, you know, what's gonna happen if I don't get there? I can gladly say I'll take care of it, but if I don't, then we got trash and we got the grass is two foot long and, um. Yeah, I, I, I don't know if you dispose of anything or if there's anything to dispose of.
Mm-hmm. So at our sites right now, just speaking in experience, um, we do have a dumpster that we keep on site while we're doing the construction. That's removed after the construction. The client asks us to bring in another dumpster, so they constantly have that dumpster. We have these lease agreements in place between not only ourselves and the landowner, if it's not a purchase. But our lease is very concrete in the sense of what their preventative maintenance program looks like. And what their fees will be if that is not taken care of, we will take care of it ourselves. So there is a very concrete and I'm more than willing to share that with you as well, if that's something that you would need to see, but. The cle- the site cleanliness, the upkeep, the weeds, all of those things are required in their lease agreement with heavy consequences if not maintained, so.
Well, that's what I mean. We gotta have some teeth to it, if you're gonna oppose it, you gotta get some teeth to it.
Houses that we all know.
So, is there any hazardous material that you would need a placard on the side of this? No, no placard?
No.
And what happens, like, I'm assuming you do fire department trainings or, I mean, what if these starts on fire?
So each, all of these have their own switches, so if there's an issue, the immediate and, the immediate thing that would happen is the switch would go off to cut power. Um, we do have nine-one-one addresses obtained for these and it is. Addressed to them as to what kind of, that it is a data center or a digital infrastructure, I believe is what it's called. Um.
So, again, if one of these would start on fire, what's, what's needed to put? Out the fire, is there adding cotton or?
Water.
I believe, yeah, yep. You know, there's some.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Good for, you gotta have a special foam chemical or.
Yeah, nope, it would just be water.
Water, okay.
Are there fire suppressions and, so fire suppression systems within any of these?
Yes, inside the containers, they are already put in there, um, with sprinkling systems. And again, it depends on the container, but all of the containers that we allow on our sites are UL listed. We don't take any sort of. Um, excuse me, Chan, like Chinese type infrastructure. We don't utilize anything that's not UL listed, so.
I think, I think we need to look into this, um.
Did you guys get the email that was forwarded to you guys on Friday? I just wanted to make sure.
There's a lot of emails that came through on Friday.
So again, yeah, I, I don't know about a road trip, but I mean, if there is. A unit.
Plenty of things that I'm willing to share too, like this is the one that we most recently put up. This is a containerized structure. This is a five megawatt site. So you can see that there's four containers. We did a stacked, we wouldn't do stacked again. It's kind of a nightmare and the stairs were extremely expensive, so.
We got a guy here who makes pretty good stairs.
Like these stairs, I rather, rather would have been kicked in the shin, um, but, so like I do have several things.
Where's that at?
This one is in Potawatomi County. This was actually rezoned into Potawatomi County that was Shelby County originally.
Is that a bean field I'm looking at?
Correct.
What do you got? Are we talking an acre, two acres?
An acre to two acres is generally on a five megawatt site, we do one to two acres. Now. So it depends on the client. This particular site was not fenced. We've never had any issues with any sort of, um. Crime, but we also do have a high security system with the cameras and, uh, fencing, or not fencing, but cameras and lighting. Um, so we haven't had any issues with this particular site, but the clients that we are working with right now are requiring fencing, so there would be fence.
So if we, let's say we got our ordinance or whatever, we wanted to do resolution ready tomorrow, what kind of timeframe are you guys looking at?
Who are you looking at? Tony or?
Tony?
Yeah.
What timeline are you looking at?
Fine, you can do it.
Okay.
Yeah, like I say, I would like to get the ball bouncing for the end of the year.
Do you wanna?
You know, and.
Bob, do you wanna introduce yourself and where you live?
Yeah, I'm ringing. Mike knows where I live. I got a perfect example where they could set this up. Perfect, perfect example because if they face those fans to the south and the west, there's nobody lives out there where a mile. Absolutely, you know, there's a cemetery, you know, uh, outside of that, there's nothing and a half mile up the road. Got a neighbor and I'm a half mile up the road.
We're right by a substation.
Yeah, we're right.
Eight zero eight eight four and seventy fifth avenue, you can go out and.
Eight seventy fifth street and four.
Robert Reagan.
Eight zero eight four.
Eight zero eight eight. Four hundred and seventy fifth avenue and seventy fifth street.
Yeah, that's my house, right there.
Go south.
Right, a little bit more. Right here is a substation. Right here on the corner of the farm and what I've talked to Jared is. I wanna run a triangle piece up to here. If they're interested, and they're very interested. There's a gate hole up there, so it's on top of a hill. We got no issues with any traffic in and out. And doing that, they can put these fans this way. Here's the house and my house is up there, you know, so.
So you'd be interested in a triangle from like that back corner of the substation?
Back corner of this cuz I wanna make it farmer friendly.
Right.
You know, I don't like the corners, so that, that is.
How would you share the?
Yeah, we, yeah, I wanna do, I got, we got all that in you, so trust me.
I mean, you don't need a separate driveway.
No, no, we're gonna take a shared driveway, yeah. But the driveway is already there, it's right here and I can come out there, like I said, you're on top of a hill, you got perfect vision, you know, so. That's what I said to Jared, her dad, I talked to him and I said. Two acres is what they want and that's basically gonna run it right up to that gate hole.
So here's like an example of one of our other permits that we've submitted with that triangle kind of idea. Just so you can see the visual. Generally, we will, so what we did with two of our other projects is we bought, we bought two acres. But right now, the site is only utilizing one acre of space, so our farmer is planting up to where our site starts. So we're still paying the lease for the land and just not utilizing it yet, so.
Now, when you talked about like lighting for your security system, them on like.
Like sensor lights.
So just that, somebody comes in there, it's gonna light up.
Yeah, and it's not, so a lot of these are like the. High, high and heavy, you know, security system, so it's not like a rabbit or something is gonna walk by and it'll set it off, so. It's, you know, the more, more.
So it wouldn't be lit up there all the time, that it's gonna shine in sometimes.
Do you have other pictures that you could send us, Sykes?
Absolutely, so I actually have.
I'd like to make a few phone calls, actually.
I actually have and I can share, I don't think that this, and it might not be downloading on my. Yeah, I have a video to share too with you guys, um, of just the entire process. We took drone footage of. One of our sites actually being full blown put together, so I can share that with you guys.
Good.
Um, but yeah, the, we've, we've used two different sets of containers, um, that we have put in. There's hundreds of them. It's just picking and choosing which ones.
So are you looking at for Jackson County container sites?
So with Bob's.
Your dad said permanent on my.
Yeah, Bob's would be a permanent, so it's, it's hard to even say like, oh, we would like to have a permit just for us. Because every scenario is going to have some sort of difference.
When you say permit, you're talking to. It's gonna be put on a slab. Twenty by. I think your dad said maybe out there, maybe a ten by seventy or something, that's seem right. Structure?
By seventy.
Yeah, ten by seventy structure, yeah, it's gonna be a real structure.
Yeah.
So like a shed.
Yeah, right, exactly. I mean, it's climate controlled, so it's gonna be foamed, it's gonna be. Right, right, exactly. There's no running water. No, no running water. But we're not that far from, correct, but I mean. No, but, yeah, just wondering.
So that is one thing too, is, um, like right now with Alex Linderwell, I believe. Um, we are working on, I just got an email from him and we're gonna stop and see him before we leave. Um, but he is wanting us, so this particular client that we're looking at for Alex's site. Would be requiring water, running water, because they're wanting an office building with a bathroom and. Um, which is not to say that that's the case with every situation, but it's per client generally.
Sure, I mean, again, they have to get a permit and comply.
Absolutely, yeah.
Lori?
I have a, I just wanna follow up on a question that he asked. Um, from what I've seen, a lot of these buildings are not climate controlled. And you're saying climate control?
Mm-hmm.
So, climate control has a couple of different languages, so in the sense of the way that the building is built. It will push the hot air out. When we do the buildings, they're wanting to be the hot air out. We have been working with, um, oh my gosh, I just lost his name, MH or M two H controls. And they do climate control. So if we were to do a building, we would be using a climate control system inside the building. Um, when it comes to the containers, those are self-climate controlled.
So you're talking like, I mean, minimal, you had a mini split or something you're talking, or I mean, what are you talking, I mean, we're talking.
Just airflow, that is airflow. And so your top heat vent may be.
Okay, so it's hot enough, it's hot enough or warm enough in the units, so the winter time when it's twenty below, you don't have no issues or you have to have some type of heat?
So the only issues that we have in the winter time is generally the intake side. Which is obviously the, the air is coming in because of the snow, so we have to have some sort of snow fencing. They kind of do the prep, like the preparation for fall stuff and that's why they switch out the filters and stuff. Um, in the fall to prevent all of those issues, but with us being in Iowa and it's so lovely here with all the corn and beans that we have. We do have to change out the filters a little more often because of when the harvest comes in, it is a little bit more intense.
This is inside, it's got nothing to do with this, but if you're actually gonna go towards building structures and that, did you ever think that would geothermal ever work to help cool?
We have a lot of ideas. I should say Jared has a lot of ideas. He comes in and he's like, you're not gonna leave, but I'm like, yes, I probably can, but. So one of the things that we've discussed also is like utilizing the byproduct of our heat to dry corn. We are working on that in a different county. That is going to take a little bit more engineering, but just to kinda give, I mean, we're not limiting ourselves. We're not looking at. What this picture is, which is this data center right now that we're wanting to do, we're looking at the broad spectrum of. What can we do to make a difference in the data center industry, so.
So obviously, this is an expanding.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, and so you, how big is your company, just you and your dad?
So, five months ago, since then, we've hired on three more employees, so now we have. Jared Olery, who's the founder, um, John Bunacor, who is our financial chief advisor. Amanda, who is, um, in the sense of getting into my position for director of operations. Jessica McCoy, we have doing our logistics for everything. We're pretty much all doing everything at the same time, so, um. But yeah, I've kinda taken the lead on the, uh, county and zoning situations, so.
I'm sorry. Can you tell me the name of the company?
How about U R Energy, letter U, letter R, energy.
And your base title?
Uh. Your base title, Grand Island, yes. Hopefully I have one, it might be on my backpack. Um, so yeah, we're, I mean. It's been exhausting and I will say that because we have been, um, up against what, you know, some people would say bad players and so. We're, you know, we're here face to face because we wanna have these discussions with you guys. We wanna know. What adjustments we could make on our end to make this, you know, a practical thing for you guys to have in your county. We don't wanna push anybody to do anything they don't wanna do or aren't ready for either, so, um, yeah, thank you guys for listening to everything today, I guess.
Any final thoughts, Lori?
No, we do, um, I'm willing to help you guys gather more information. I'm willing to do a road trip with you guys or whatever we need to do.
I guess, you know, I'm thinking about that, but I, you know, my point would be if I can see the sites, if I can see it, you know, I mean, I can go to Beacon and see it. If I can, if I, if you send me pictures, I can see it. I, you know, if I talk to fellow supervisors, fellow zoning people. I will, I expect a honest answer.
Absolutely, I can send you Potawatomi information and Shelby and Woodbury if you would like me to.
Good day. I guess I would like you to look to see what kind of resolutions, like, or doesn't they utilize to, to do this or it's all just?
We still don't do, um, most of it. From what I'm finding out with, um. Grundy, I think they're doing ordinance because of like you said, their bad player. Um, Shelby was all conditional use. I'm, I don't know about Pot and Woodbury.
Potawatomi was utilized as a special thing because they were wanting the land to be industrial. It's the location make more sense for the county to have it labeled as industrial because it's right across the street from a very large Menards. So we, we did have to go through a rezoning process for that, um, and it ended up being more beneficial for the county, so that's why we went ahead and did it, so.
Well, I, I, you know, I, I keep thinking in the back of my head, the equipment that you have in there, this appears to be like a commercial. Commercial type structure, so it should be almost taxed that way at the value of the structure, correct?
Well, if we were doing that, you'd, um, instead of conditional use and A wine, you'd be looking at potentially, um. A rezoning, but here less bad. Um, a rezoning, but here, let's back up a second before I get too far deep into that. So value for um assessment would be done at a different level. The assessor could still value that as commercial, even though it's on egg land. They would bid it value the lands that way, but they could, they could value. Well, actually, they could do the land and the structure, excuse me, I didn't think about that.
Would be on.
The lease, um, well, they'd probably be working on, on that. Um, as far as for the taxes, who would be responsible for that if the land was being classed. For tax purposes is commercial or industrial. And we could have a zone ag and they could still have industrial, commercial in the assessor's office. As their classification, so that would not. We don't necessarily mirror each other, so if they had conditional use in A one, it could still be taxed and valued or valued as.
Not that five units are gonna make a difference.
Well, I guess my thing is you couldn't take that two acres and zone it industrial because then that spot's only. Or does that, is that?
If the, if the. I mean, it could, um if the, if they applied and, you know, if we would allow them to. Use conditional use in that A one. And that would be actually the way our ordinance is written, that would be the determination or the recommendation of the subdivision. To you guys too.
And I'd be willing to keep Mike updated if they did something, you know, if they wanna come out and look at stuff and.
Well, I'm close to both of you, you know, I mean, I, you know, I, I get it, I hear you. I just, we just gotta look at the big picture.
Right, yes.
You know, we're gonna get attacked either way, so.
Mike, could you see who the other property owner is? Okay, so you know.
Never had an address on it. Twenty seventeen.
So, yeah, I mean. We just need to make a few phone calls, maybe if that's the case, uh talk with Lori and see what she has for information and. I, I don't see a big holdup here, I don't, I, I don't know, does. Anybody else have concerns or questions that?
Mike, I think what they wanna, what Jared was talking is he might wanna get some dirt moved so it can settle out over the winter, you know? And you know how things work. If you're gonna make a good structure, you want it to go through the frost and. Oh, you know.
We don't have as um a zoning ordinance that regulates site work as far as moving dirt. Where we would have a problem is if anything permanent was built. I mean, well, and I, when I start with permanent, I'm starting with concrete.
Yeah.
That is permanent, right, so we don't wanna add any footings, any foundations, any. You know, cuz that is, you just moved into a, a struc, you know, the sort of a structure.
Week or two, I think, if we could gather some information. Figure out how we wanna go, whether it is a resolution or, or a conditional permit.
Don't think we can do with a resolution. I'm really thinking what you need to do is conditional use. And.
Special exception?
Well, it would have to start with the zoning commission to see how they want this zone. And if, if they would, what, where they're gonna allow this type of um. Operation, and then it would have to go through the board of adjustment. So the earliest that I'm gonna get anything on my agenda for the board of adjustment. Or the zoning commission is gonna be November's meeting.
Or we could formulate an ordinance. We, our board couldn't just write an ordinance.
I, we do some research. So not look good. Um, I, you know, so I didn't say no, um, but can I look into that? Cuz I'm not exactly sure how that would look. So I'm gonna have to reach out to our county attorney for advice.
Would it be easier to have a special meeting?
Probably.
We got some questions we need answered, but we appreciate you guys' information.
Absolutely, I'll work on sending this all over to Becca and she'll log it on to you, so just anticipating that from her.
Any questions?
Absolutely.
Bob, Tony?
You guys are talking about keeping the place cleaned up. Somebody comes in and mows that REC substation anyways. You know, that fence was out there, I'm pretty sure. Who are these guys? Talked to a good working deal to keep everything cleaned up, you know.
I get it, but we still have something in place to say, you know, if it does not happen, this is what's gonna happen.
Right, exactly, yeah, exactly.
If and then, you know.
You could like groundmate from working or something.
Well, that would, the place would be a mess.
And there's another thing, we're looking for infrastructure here in Jackson County. Now, if that gets zoned as, as a, as a. Building site, it's, there's a better tax base than there is on farm ground. Everybody knows that, you know what I mean?
Appreciate it.
Couple points of interest.
Pretty appreciated, yep, well, thank you guys and.
Okay, anything else, Lori, that you wanted to throw at us?
Not on that, but we got this light major subdivision we're gonna get. Um, just south of.
Three ninety fifth will get you there.
Is that East West Street before you turn in and go to like to the shop? Okay, so this, here, let me just hand you the, the plan to the final. Cuz I know you guys have had all this, but um. So this is the final subdivision, but I wanna show, I wanna show you guys. The whole up, what, so the property owner to this, took this to the zoning commission. I believe it was March of two thousand twenty three. And part of the stipulation was the, the drainage issues. Here, let me just come over here.
We're all here for that, correct?
Yeah, but the drainage issues be addressed from here, this point down to here.
Cause there's a house or something.
This one would take, used to take water, so. Um, so there was an eight inch culver or excuse me, drain tube that drained from in here down to the river. That is, that's still in place, the eight inch one, but there's been now a thirteen inch tube. Placed with a storm grain somewhere in here. Um, actually, a storm grain would be. Probably right here. Um, the other tube is still here and that water is picked up right up there and drained out, so they run parallel with each other. But that's what the holdup of this subdivision was, um was held up for fifteen months by the US Army Corps of Engineers. And it is now, um matter of fact, we tried to move him up. The zoning commission actually had a special meeting. They were not gonna have a September meeting due to quorum. We moved a special date up on to September ninth, a week ahead of their normal meeting. So that we knew we'd have a quorum and be able to get this addressed and also, you know, work on our wind ordinance. Um, the checklist is completed, um. There is all the, the, the plant requirements are done, the um. Everything with the drainage has been addressed. The, the driveways are not gonna be put in by the developer, they will be put in by the property owners. So that is there. The resolution is in place that addresses. Excuse me, not the resolution, the covenants are in place. Um, there's really no improvements needed for common areas. Driveway ins, insulation, there is no flat specs for that cuz we don't know where the, the houses are going.
They will all go toward three oh four though, is that correct?
Yeah, it's the only way to go, that's the only road.
There's no right away to the backside of them, the three oh turn?
Not to my, it's, no, um, you have houses. Me, three oh. Yeah, there, there's no roads there. There is nothing set up for ingress, egress to the, to the south of those lots. Um, our land use uh policy statement, it meets our standards, it provides. Um, optimum locations for, for the land use in this category. It encourages compact development. It protects natural resources for future earth, future use, excuse me. Um, it encourages urban development near urban areas. It coordinates with transportation systems. That private road has been in place, so they did not have to add infrastructure. And there are um easements that, that runs along that road already in place. It is not in a floodplain, it can, uh, does it conserve and enhance natural beauty and historical sites? It does conserve um enhanced, that's subjective, that we need to probably look at in our next ordinance. Um, does it avoid creating a monopoly on potential land developments? Well, no, but it does. Finish off this particular area. Um, accommodates existing development without in, without encouraging its inappropriate growth. This is most appropriate use of this land to use as, as a rural subdivision. Um, and then basically not applicable to our policy statement, encourage compatible, compatible home-based enterprise. So that is a non, non-use. The covenants, um. Like I said, they address what needs to be addressed. They address fence responsibility, even though there's no um egg land. And driveway and parking control, so it addresses that. And like I said, everything else is um. To do with. The plants, and these lots are allowing. Decent sized houses that we're not gonna run into. This means.
No, I suspect that they're gonna be.
How many lots are there?
There's, it's a six lot subdivision, and here's, here's what it does now. It um, it meets our modern requirements of a minimum of twenty thousand square feet. For A one zone lots, so they are considerably bigger than the lots to the north.
I thought she was talking about restrictive covenants for the, for a footage on the, so we don't put a trailer in there and, and.
They, the restrictive covenants did not, um, he does not have that in his. He does not have that in his covenants. That there can't be mod, you know, any modular or manufactured homes. No, that is not part of it, if that was your question. Um. I'm not convinced that's gonna be an issue. Um, I'm assuming that. I'm assuming that the prices of these lots are gonna be. You know, in, in market.
You're gonna put a nice home.
Of substantial market value and um, but yeah. But no, there has not been any covenants made by this developer.
The zoning board recommended it, it's met all the checklist, everything's good.
Yes, sir.
I have a motion and second to approve the resolution to, for the Holden subdivision as presented. You have the resolution?
You do.
Ten seventy two dash ten dash oh one dash twenty twenty four.
By that number, all those in favor, say aye. Copy that number.
Lisa, will you repeat that for me? Resolution ten seventy two. Dash ten. That's zero one. Dash twenty twenty four.
Did we vote? All those in favor? Vote, motion carried.
Okay. You guys need to talk to me, you know where I'm finding, right? But I thank you guys and thanks for being patient with me. I got out of that other appointment as fast as I could.
Okay, any other business before the board?
Um, before we adjourn, I do wanna mention with our new website. You'll be seeing these signs up around the courthouse, so. Um, if you're interested in any of the items, getting alerts, job postings, news, agendas. That you can get on the new website that the county has and get updated on them.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried, meeting adjourned, thank you.